Welcome, everyone. It's 6:00 PM. We'll go ahead and start. And welcome to the Wednesday, December 4, 2024, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For the purposes of the minutes, please reflect that the following commissioners are present: Wade, Hench, Elliott, Townsend, Quellhorst, Craig, Miller. Next item on the discussion is public discussion of any item not on tonight's agenda. If there's anybody that's in attendance who'd like to discuss something with the Commission of something that's not on tonight's agenda, now's your opportunity. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we'll move on to item number four for underdevelopment items. This is case number REZ24-0010. The location is east of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and west of Camp Cardinal Road. This is an application for rezoning of approximately 27.68 acres of land from low-density multifamily residential with a planned development overlay to low-density multifamily residential with a planned development overlay. Ann?
Thank you, Chair. As was mentioned, this is a proposed rezoning. This should be familiar to most everyone on the Commission. Here is the subject property. She's just showing the aerial. It's located east of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and west of Camp Cardinal Road. Here is the zoning map. The property is currently zoned RM12 with the planned development overlay. You can see that the land to the west is also zoned RM12 with the planned development overlay. That site's currently vacant. To the south, it's owned by Community Commercial. To the southeast, there's more RM12 zoning and two existing apartment buildings. To the east, this is the land that the Commission discussed at their last meeting, the proposed Western Homes Development. That's zoned RS8 with the planned development overlay. In terms of background, this property was originally rezoned to OPD RM12 in August of 2022. After that rezoning approval went through, the applicants moved forward with the subdivision process, and they had their final plat for Cardinal Heights Part One and Part Two that were approved in February of 2023. Here is, on the left here, is the proposed OPD plan. And this plan and this request does not change the proposed land uses or building types that were originally approved with the rezoning from August of 2022. It also doesn't change anything regarding the sensitive areas development plan or the conservation easements that were approved as part of the subdivision process. And those conservation easement areas are, the areas shown in pink, these are all outlots where the sensitive areas are going to be protected, and conservation easements are currently in place to protect those sensitive features, and that will not change. The purpose of this rezoning is to request two waivers from zoning standards, which is, and these requests can only be approved through a planned development overlay process. So the first request is a five-foot reduction in the minimum front yard setback from 20 feet to 15 feet. And the second request is a seven-foot increase in the maximum building height from 35 feet to 52, I'm sorry, 42 feet. These requests are only for the building identified here in red. Here are a few photographs of the site. This is looking east at the Deer Creek Road extension. You can see there's already infrastructure being put in. The streets are being put in, and other utilities are being put in. This is a photograph looking south on Camp Cardinal Boulevard. This is, again, the Deer Creek Road extension into the subject property. And then the last photograph is looking north on Camp Cardinal Boulevard. Again, the current rezoning is OPD RM12. The proposed rezoning is OPD RM12. Again, the request is to allow some flexibility in zoning standards. Here again is the approved and proposed OPD plan. The total number of lots, which is 23, is not changing. There's 22 duplexes, four townhome-style units, and one 30-unit multifamily building. You can see here, this is Deer Creek Road, which would be extended through the site. There's one cul-de-sac to the north and a loop street to the south. These are where all of the duplexes would be, more duplexes here. The townhomes are shown here, and then the multifamily building here. It's a total of 78 units. With a planned development overlay rezoning, there are specific approval criteria along with the general approval criteria. I'm going to go through these relatively quickly since this has been viewed by the Commission before, and I'm going to try to focus on the request regarding the waivers. So the first standard is related to the design density and whether or not it's compatible with an adjacent development. The proposed land uses do fit with the existing development, and the proposed development to the east. The development intensity transitions from lower scale on the west side with the duplexes and increases as you head east, which aligns well with the proposed multifamily that Western Homes is proposing on their site. I did want to mention that there was an error in the staff report. The staff report states that the garages for the duplexes will need to be recessed from the front facade of the building. That is the error. Since this is an RM12 zone, the duplexes do not need to meet that standard. That is for certain single-family zones. So I just wanted to note that when we get to the point where building permits are issued, we will ensure that the duplexes meet the standards for the RM12 zone, but it doesn't require the garage facades to be recessed. In terms of open space, there is a lot of open space on the site due to the sensitive areas. In terms of traffic circulation, the property would be accessed off of Camp Cardinal Road, and there is a proposed traffic circle at the intersection of Deer Creek Road and Camp Cardinal Road. Staff is recommending that the Commission maintain that previously approved condition that requires the owner to contribute to the construction of Camp Cardinal Road as well as the traffic circle, and that would be 50% of the cost of both of those improvements. In terms of not overburdening existing utilities, this is an infill site. The subject property has access to sanitary sewer and water, and the developer is already installing infrastructure on the property. The third criteria is that development will not adversely affect views, light, air, property values, and privacy. As I mentioned before, there are existing conservation easements on the property that will be maintained. It's almost 17 acres of land that will not be developed, but will be preserved. Also, you can see in this aerial imagery, there's not a lot of development around the subject property. There's some duplexes to the north. There's the existing apartments to the southeast, and then there's St. Andrew Church to the east. And this development will not impact neighboring residents more than a conventional development would.
Can you go back a minute? Where's the Western Homes development?
It's right, it's this property here plus this.
I mean, that's another area that will be developed and is residential.
The fourth criteria is that land use building types and the proposed variations from zoning requirements will be in the public interest. Speaking of the waivers, again, it's just for this building that's shown here in red. The applicant has requested a reduction in the front setback from 20 feet to 15 feet due to site terrain, sensitive features, and the existing conservation easements in this area. Again, this pink area is a conservation easement that cannot be developed. Additionally, the fire department requested that the applicant move the building closer to the street to address fire code concerns. The alternative of moving the building was to provide a fire truck turnaround behind the building, which was not practical given the conservation easement and the site constraints. And moving the building forward requires approval for that setback reduction, and staff finds this request to be acceptable. Many other residential uses have a 15-foot setback, and the requested variation will still accommodate light, air, privacy, as well as onsite open space. The second request is to increase the building height of this building to 42 feet, and the applicant has requested this modification due to site topography. We measure building height based on the average grade to the top of the roof line. So due to the sloping nature of the site, the building exceeds that 35-foot height maximum. However, from the front of the building, it will appear to be 35 feet. At the rear of the building, it will appear taller than 35 feet. But again, that's because of the sloping grade on the site. So the rear portion of the building will look taller, and that's adjacent to this outlot, which is wooded, and so visually it will have no impact of passersby on the street. And staff finds this request to be reasonable as well, and the proposed increase in height will still accommodate sufficient light and air and open space, and the building will still appear to be 35 feet from the front. Here are some elevations that were provided by the applicant of the building, of the multifamily building. So this is the front elevation. So here you can see, it looks like a three-story building. From the rear, it looks a little taller because of that sloped site. In terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan, the future land use map envisions this to be between eight and 16 dwelling units per acre. The proposed development is under that at three, but the site is constrained significantly by the sensitive features. They are incorporating a diversity of housing types and preserving woodlands, wetlands, and slopes on the site. And lastly, for environmentally sensitive areas, that isn't being considered by the Commission tonight, but I just wanted, again, to note that those conservation easements have been put in place to protect those sensitive areas, and that will not be changing. In terms of next steps, after a recommendation from the Commission, the City Council will set a public hearing. We anticipate they will do that at their next meeting on December 10, and the public hearing would be on January 7. Staff is recommending approval of REZ24-0010, a rezoning to OPD RM12, subject to one condition, which is prior to issuance of a building permit, the owner contributes 50% of the cost of upgrading Camp Cardinal Road to city standards and contributing 50% of the cost of the construction of the traffic circle as well. So that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back to the Chair.
Thanks, Ann. Now, this is the portion of the meeting where commissioners are able to ask staff questions about the staff report. I have one. On one of the criteria about the development or the change doesn't impact views, that always seems so subjective to me. You know, the view for one person could be fine to the other person is horrible and for no reason other than personal opinion. Do you have any objective criteria regarding that, or is it subjectively interpreted, just as I think it probably is?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, it is subjective. I will say for this property, in terms of views, the only real neighbors are to the north, and they're still going to have a creek in their backyard and a woodland in their backyard, and that won't change with this development.
And did any of the neighbors, what's that development to the east, Walnut Ridge?
Yeah, Walnut Ridge.
They were the ones that were very opposed to a previous rezoning?
Oh, actually, sorry, it was these neighbors to the north.
North, okay. So we didn't hear, no feedback's been obtained from?
No.
Very good. All right, thank you. Anyone else on the Commission have a question for Ann regarding this?
Yeah, I just had a quick related question, which you might have already answered, but in the report, I think it noted that the applicant held a good neighbor meeting. Are you aware of any results or feedback that might have been obtained as a result of that meeting?
So they had held the good neighbor meeting for the original rezoning in 2022.
Ah, okay.
And there was a significant amount of feedback from that good neighbor meeting and the public hearing process for that. But with this rezoning, we haven't heard anything from neighbors, and they were notified of the meeting tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Mrs. Townsend?
Nothing.
I have a question. Is it possible to go back to the map that shows the development we talked about last time? And the traffic circle, does it go between those two developments? The traffic circle at the top of this page?
Yeah, so this, it does. This is, I don't like viewing it this way, because it's, the top is east.
Right.
Let me find a different one. Let me go back to the beginning. There's a larger, so, yeah. So this is north.
Right.
This is east. Here's the traffic circle, and it does, this traffic circle does go into the Western Homes Development. They are also required to contribute 50% of the cost of that, construction of that traffic circle.
So in relation to that traffic circle, where are the bigger units in that development? Are they near this big unit?
Yeah, they are. So right in this area, so here's, this is an aerial, but here's the traffic circle.
Right.
This is the memory care facility in this area, and there's some townhome-style multifamily. And then in this area, they have a multifamily building here, a multifamily building here, and a multifamily building across the street.
And we agreed for them to increase the height, but I can't recollect how high.
That was 45 feet, and that was for, yeah, I think it was for all the buildings, 45 feet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Chad?
Steve?
All right. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Now's the opportunity for people to address the Commission on this application, and we'll start out with the applicant or the applicant's representative.
Gina Landau from Navigate Homes. I don't have much to add, and did a very good job of explaining what our intentions are for this. Nothing's really changed from the very beginning as far as the intention of a 30plex and a 4plex, but as we finally have jumped into the design with our engineering, and if you have any specific questions, Brian Vogel, our engineer, is here. He's from Hall &amp; Hall. As we jumped into starting designing parking lots and parking underground and things, we ran into a couple glitches, and that is kind of what Ann was referring to as the waivers, or what is the impetus for this?
Hi, Gina. I have a couple questions for you. So the moving the setback, reducing the setback in the front, that was primarily because of the fire department's request?
Correct. We met with the fire department, and that is kind of their requirement for safety.
And then for the additional height, that's primarily related to the topography on the site?
It is, because the intention is to have all of the parking underground. Well, not all of it. Let me rephrase that. They'll go in between the 30plex and the 4plex. There'll be a drive going in there, and then pull around and go underneath. So most of the parking will be under the building. So that's how the back part of the building appeared as a four-story. The front is only a three-story. There will be a little bit of outdoor parking just to hit the requirements, but the majority shall be under.
All right. Anybody else have questions for Gina?
Who's your target audience here? I'm speaking from, it seems like it's a nice development for families, and I'm starting to think, where are the kids going to play? What are they, I mean, that's just my.
Well, I'm not the sales and the marketing person. We have someone else at Navigate, but typically, most condos, because that's the intention, this is not going to be an apartment building, there'll be 30 units, but we will sell them off as condos. So typically, those are first-time home buyers. They build into a condo, whether it's a 4plex or a stacked flat like we're doing now, and then eventually maybe move into a duplex, which is what the rest of that development is.
Right.
So I think that's what it is. Possibly children, yes, but maybe just starting their families.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not wanting to answer for you, but there's no structured play area, but there's lots of open space with the conservation areas around it?
Yes, lots and lots of open space. All of the open space with the outlots will be maintained by an HOA that is set up, and we've been working with our attorneys to get those set up to make it equitable for everyone, basically, yes.
No reason to know this answer, but would you happen to know how many acres of open space there are that are going to be in the conservation reserve?
Ann might know that.
It's almost 17.
I was going to say.
And then they have onsite open space. That's almost 9,000 square feet in addition to that.
Very good. Thank you.
And not to be cynical, but we know how well HOAs take care of their open space.
If you could accomplish anything in your life.
Throw your kid over the cliff to the poison ivy.
If there's a way to make HOAs more responsive to the maintenance of their responsibilities.
Noted.
I know it's, you have nothing to do with that.
Make that a tight document.
Noted, thank you. I appreciate that, and I do understand exactly what you're saying.
Any other questions for anybody on the Commission for Gina?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming there's no affordable units in this whole.
There's nothing designated of the true affordable housing according to your requirements. There is not.
But these are not luxury 3,000 square foot houses?
These are not. These are trying to be quite affordable units. They are all one- and two-bedroom units in this 30plex. So we are trying to keep the price point down where you can actually afford to buy it as a first-time homeowner, yes.
Affordable by Iowa City standards, not by state standards?
I should have said attainable. Let's use that word instead.
All right, all right. Any other questions for Gina? Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to address to us?
We have questions.
All right. Any questions for Ryan with the engineering firm?
I guess, giving the.
If there are, then we should have Ryan come up if you have an engineering question for him.
Giving the extra space, the other extra height, is there any reason why we couldn't have asked for some affordable units in these buildings?
This area doesn't require income-restricted units. You would have to condition the rezoning on that and demonstrate that this rezoning creates a public need for those income-restricted units. I think that would be difficult.
Okay. I just.
And I guess, just to explain the height thing, it's really a topography issue, because the way we, this is the site, okay? It's, this is the front, and this is the rear. And we calculate height from the average grade, which is here. So from here, from the front, it's going to be 35 feet. But that's not how our code measures height. So we have to, we measure it from the middle, a much lower grade, so they, you can't have the building be like this, right? So that's the situation that they're in.
And you're not actually getting additional units? You're just.
No, it's still a 30-unit building. Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Ryan, could you just talk a little bit about the height issue? I think Ann described it pretty clearly, but I just want to give you an opportunity. About the height, and then also the other thing is, do you happen to know distance from other buildings? Because in this area, there's a history of neighbors complaining about view, interference with their view, and so I just want to make sure we spend some time talking about that.
Yeah, I guess I don't know the distance from other buildings and the views, but as far as the height, Ann hit it right on. I mean, the front of the building's going to be 30 feet. I don't really think it's 35. I think it's 30. But as the grade slopes away to get to the back, then you have that 40-foot height or whatever it is. So that's what we need the adjustment for.
What, like, what's the slope changes on that lot where you're going to build that? Is it a, from front to back?
It'll be around 12 feet. It's that, that distance of that garage floor.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Ryan? And Ryan, would you state your name for the record?
Brian Vogel with Hall &amp; Hall Engineers.
And then would you sign in, please? Sorry, I should have said that upfront. Last call for questions for Ryan? All right, thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Commission on this particular application? Seeing none. Gina, you have anything else to add?
Nothing.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. If I can have a motion on this application.
Move to approve.
Motion by Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wade. Discussion. Maggie, since you made the motion, you get to go first if you want to discuss.
To me, this seems like a simple request. The fire department requests a setback, and the height seems to be reasonable based on your recommendations, so easy request for me.
Very good. Chad?
Same here. I mean, it's a safety request based on the fire department and it's, you know, the law of averages for the topography, so.
Any other discussion by members of the Commission?
It's reasonable.
Yeah. I think this is a pretty reasonable request. I mean, any chance we have to increase the number of housing units that are more accessible by Iowa City standards, we certainly should do that, and I support this application. So we'll go ahead and call, vote on this. All those in favor of this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved 7 to 0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion items. Number five, discussion of planning and zoning commission representation on the comprehensive plan update steering committee. Ann?
Thank you, Chair. As I mentioned, I think at the last meeting, I have a couple slides on this. We are starting to get started on our comprehensive plan update. We just executed a consultant agreement with Confluence out of Des Moines, and there was a memo in your packet related to this, but we are formulating a steering committee for this comprehensive plan update. We are requesting two volunteers from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Just a little bit about the steering committee. The role of the committee is to serve as an advisor to city staff and consultant, the consultant team, as we're preparing the plan, to provide input and feedback, to review the drafts, to help establish final recommendations, which will eventually come to this commission, and then to be an ambassador for the plan, to promote awareness throughout the community, to encourage participation, and to advocate for the plan. In terms of level of commitment, it's about a one-and-a-half-year process, and there's probably going to be about seven meetings. These meetings will last 90 minutes and will be held in the evening, probably at 6 o'clock, so.
Have the contract already been signed with Confluence?
It has.
So these meetings will, this consultation will start pretty soon?
In January. You think the first meeting will be at the end of January.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for Ann regarding this process?
Is there additional, beyond the two people from the P&amp;Z Committee, are there additional non-staff?
Yes, it's going to be about 20, 26 people from a variety of different stakeholder groups throughout the community.
This, I've been on this commission for 10 years, and I'm, I think I'm pretty invested in all this, and I think one of the key things is making sure the community understands the comprehensive plan, and I think this whole, I really like the fourth bullet point about the community ambassador for the comprehensive plan promoting awareness, encouraging participation, and advocating for the plan. I really love that that's in there. And just to throw it out there, I'd be interested in volunteering for this. If no one else is, I just would find this very interesting, and particularly the community outreach portion. And so anyone else is interested in doing this?
I have an interest as well, but, you know, of course, oftentimes me and you are aligned, so if there's other interests.
I'm new, so I'm low on the totem pole, but this stuff gets me excited, too, so I'd love to be a part of it, but.
I think the two of you have done a great job. I'm going off the Commission in the summer, and so.
Oh, is this your last year?
Yeah, I think so. I'm pretty sure. Aren't you going off, too?
I'm going off, but I want to be honest. I'm kind of motivated about this. I just.
I think you have more experience than I do, so, yeah.
So, Mike, your term ends June of '25?
The end of June of '25.
Okay.
And if it has to be a Commission member all the way through it, then you could reappoint somebody, or tonight, the Commission could just choose not to.
Or they could reappoint you for a year or something.
Well, we're termed at two terms, but, so would that be a problem? Would you have to be a Commission member the entire process through this?
I think that would be ideal, yeah.
Could you be on as a community member?
What if I volunteer and make Mike my alternative? Well, since you said that, I guess I'll just step aside.
I think it would be nice to have someone throughout the entire process, but we could
I think it would be nice to have someone throughout the entire process, but we could do it where you serve till June, but then we'd have to, we'd have to switch you out with someone else, since you'd no longer be on the commission.
I understand that.
I mean, I like the idea of, is it possible to have him, I mean, what does it take to get on the committee, to have him as sort of an ex officio? I mean, not a commission member, but a citizen member. His body of knowledge is so impressive, and he's been doing this for 10 years, and he knows every hole and every plan. I mean, it would be, it would be a shame to waste that knowledge if, and he also wants to do it, for heaven's sakes. It'd be great to have him on there. I think, I think everyone would benefit from him being on there.
Well, what if we did three members instead of two? Three is the max, because we can't have a quorum, so Mike would.
It's totally your call, but I don't think, I think it's kind of nice to have a new opinion, a middle opinion, and an old opinion as far as duration of this.
Okay. I'm fine with that, if the commission's fine with that. I think we can take on one more person.
Who else is this commission meeting?
Well, I don't want to say specific names, because we haven't contacted them yet.
Is there any diversity on this?
We've looked at that. We want to, we want to have people who are involved in housing, public health, the environment, kind of climate, economic development, employers, the university, school district, those types of stakeholders. Yeah, so it's a, it's, we also don't want, we are also looking at, like, diversity in terms of male, female, and race and ethnicity as well.
It'd be well represented if it was three.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'm all in favor.
Do we need to vote on this?
I, you have any thoughts on that, Eric?
I think air on the side of voting never hurts.
Okay.
Okay, I move that we nominate, that our representatives on the comprehensive review, plan review, steering committee are Chad, Mike, Steve.
Second.
Second.
So we got a motion by Craig, we got a second by Quell Horse. Discussion?
There are no else? Not to say the other side of that.
Anything else?
No, I think you guys will be great.
Okay. We'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, it's approved 7 to 0. Next item on the agenda is consideration of meeting minutes from November 20th, 2024. Does anyone have any major additions or corrections to the agenda as included in the packet?
Move approval.
Got a motion by Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elliot. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approval of minutes from November 20th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no.
I abstain for not being there.
Okay, so we have Townsend abstaining, so it was approved 6 to 0 with one abstention.
Yeah, I guess I should abstain as well, because I wasn't there either.
Okay, then we'll go to 5 to 0.
5 to 0 with two abstaining.
Okay, 4 to 0 with three abstentions, with Miller, Quell Horse, and Townsend abstaining.
No, I was here.
Oh, you were here.
But we only had four.
I was the person who seconded it.
I was going to say.
You can vote on minutes you weren't there for.
Yeah.
I've done it lots of times, so.
I was just saying, I always just say, oh, they sound good to me.
All right, so 5 to 0 with two abstentions, Quell Horse and Townsend. Do I have that correct?
Right. That work, yeah.
Yay. Thank you, minute person, for listening to all that. Item number seven, planning and zoning information. Ann?
No updates.
Does anyone on the commission have anything to add for planning and zoning information?
I have a question about, you know, what we talked about last time. I'm really intrigued with this whole ACT redevelopment thing. So what's the timeline for that, do you think?
I don't know. My understanding is that they want to get the rezoning approved so they can start rehabbing those existing buildings.
It seemed like they were eager to get going, which I appreciate, since so many times we improve something in six months, a year, six years later.
Isn't the, after two years, then they have to reapply? Doesn't, don't those things, rezonings are?
Those are the OPDs.
OPDs expire after two years.
Yeah, but if you go through, like, the project we were talking about tonight, they went through the final plating process, and, yeah, they're good. Well, now they're rezoning it anyway, so it kind of starts the clock over again, so.
All right. Any other items?
No, I just want to ask you after the meeting if you found out anything about what I asked before. Housing board.
Did Eric not follow up with you? Okay. I'll follow up with him.
All right. Nothing else on item number seven. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend. There's a second.
Second.
Second by Quell Horse. Discussion. One of these days, somebody's going to. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved 7 to 0, and we're adjourned.